Good evening and welcome to the October 4th, 2021 meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I'm Jim Landteli, Chair of the Commission. This is the Planning Commission's only public hearing scheduled for this month. Tonight, we will be hearing one item, the request to advertise the update of the Public Art Master Plan, a subcomponent of the Public Spaces Master Plan that is in turn one of the 11 elements of the county's comprehensive plan. We will also hear our committee reports and other business. Some items that I need to share with you now, for the safety of our staff and residents, we are holding this meeting virtually. Welcome to our commissioners, county staff, applicants, and community members who are all joining us remotely. We are legally authorized to hold this virtual meeting based on the county board's direction and the Commonwealth statutes. Before we begin, I have a few specifics to orient us to our virtual environment. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, and the county's website. The audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. You can use the number provided in the team's invite, which is 347-973-6905.
No, I just feel like you forget that...
Somebody is on... We're not muted. Conference ID is 699-683-920. And registered speakers have received Ms. Johnson's telephone number in their speaker registration confirmation, though I understand we do not have any registered speakers tonight. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference when you are online, when you are live. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that's located on your meeting's command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you, only you can do that. If you are dialing in by phone, press *6 to unmute. Commissioners, you know the drill. If you wish to be recognized, use your hand raise function or turn on your video and unmute your microphone to signal your interest, and I'll call upon you in order. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Do not use the meeting chat for discussions, public comments, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during any assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the county's website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Madam Clerk, could you please call tonight's first item?
Yes, thank you. Our first item is a request to authorize advertisement, an RTA, of public hearings by the Planning Commission at its November 1st, 2021 meeting and the Arlington County Board at its November 13th, 2021 meeting on an update of the Public Art Master Plan, a sub-element of Arlington County's comprehensive plan. Tonight, we have, I'm sorry. Tonight, we have Angela Adams and Elizabeth Carragher from Parks and Rec to present this item this evening.
Okay, welcome Ms. Adams and Ms. Carragher. Ms. Adams, the screen is yours.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Commissioner Landteli, and thank you so much to all the commissioners for having us here tonight to present an overview for Arlington County's Public Art Master Plan update. We are going to the board, as Giselle mentioned, this month and also next month, and we have about a 20 to 30-minute presentation for you today. My colleague Elizabeth Carragher and I will be each taking half of that presentation. So I like to always start with some foundational information, and we do this by talking about our definition for public art. We want to remind everyone that our goal is to put public art where the energies and the resources of the county are being directed. So we hope that everything you'll hear tonight and read in our plan is in support of this basic concept. So we want to bring everyone up to speed on the milestones for the Public Art Program. 21 years ago, the county board first adopted a public art policy, followed four years later by the adoption of our first Public Art Master Plan. We then approved a set of guidelines which have subsequently been updated. About 10 years ago, our program as a unit of Arlington Cultural Affairs moved from the Parks Department to Arlington Economic Development, and we began a Public Art Master Plan update process about four years ago, which we hope to see adapted by the end of this year. So we wanted to share some information about the success, in our opinion, of the initial Public Art Master Plan. We do feel that it has been a success in guiding our work. Our metrics are based on the number of county projects, as well as site plan projects and contributions to the Public Art Fund that have occurred since the original PAMP adoption in 2004. The 2004 PAMP was also recognized by the American Planning Association, and we feel that this was a particularly important feather in our cap when our master plan was presented as, or called out as, one of four national case studies with the APA commending Arlington for using public art for promoting design excellence and a high-quality public realm. Finally, the PAMP is often used as a model for other public art programs throughout the region and the country, and our advice is frequently sought by other cities going through the process of developing a Public Art Master Plan. I just want to also remind everyone that public art has been part of Arlington's landscape for more than 40 years when the county, a citizen activist, an artist, a developer, and the National Endowment for the Arts joined to create Dark Star Park, a seminal landscape artwork created by Nancy Holt in Dark Star Park. So this image was taken from our 2019 celebration. This is a familiar image to any of you who joined on August 1st. Every year at approximately 9:32, we always pray for a sunny day to see the shadow alignment that the artists planned for this location. So it's a great convener of the immediate community and one that the community needs no reminder in order to remember to attend each year. So since the 1970s, the county and private developers have completed more than 100 permanent and temporary artworks in Arlington. Community support and peer recognition have validated the county's investment in public art and the approaches the program has followed. For a bit of fun, the master plan update includes an interactive timeline and map of all the projects the program has completed to date. So we started this update process in 2017 with an intense phase of research, followed by robust community engagement at all levels, including steering committees, a widely distributed questionnaire, and public open houses. For something a little bit different, we developed two artist-led community engagement activities. Bookmaking with Sushmita Mazumdar that resulted in the creation of 250 handmade books relating to our public art collection, and county wandering walking tours with Graham Corral Allen that took place in locations across the county. Officially, the Public Art Master Plan is part of Arlington's comprehensive plan, which guides the coordinated development of the county. Technically, the Public Art Master Plan is a sub-element of the Public Spaces Master Plan, which was recently updated. That means our plan will be consulted as future planning efforts are undertaken and as the county makes investments in facilities and infrastructure and developers' proposed site plan projects. This plan also relates to enriching lives, Arlington Arts and Culture Strategy, the Arts Commission's strategic plan recently adopted by the county board. We made sure that the vision and values of the Public Art Plan are consistent with enriching lives. Finally, our plan will be supported by the Public Art Policy, Program Guidelines, and a brand-new implementation guide that will outline how the priorities in the Public Art Master Plan can be translated into actions through partnerships with county agencies and other collaborators. Let's start with why we prepared this update and what we hope to accomplish with it. It's now been more than 17 years since the county's first Public Art Plan was approved. This update was initiated to make sure the program is taking into consideration the changes in the context that have occurred since then and to re-ground the program in the values around which it was organized in the first place. We also seek to reflect new opportunities and practices, as well as changing county policies and priorities. A number of changes were made in the plan update to address how both the field of public art and the county have evolved since 2004. There is new emphasis on equity, audience development and engagement, biophilia, creative placemaking, social practice, and artist residencies. There are two new priority corridors, Langston Boulevard and Potomac Riverfront, and two new themes, innovative Arlington and sustainable Arlington. Action and administrative items have been separated out into the forthcoming implementation guide. We will discuss a number of these items in greater detail as we go through the presentation. Here in a nutshell is what you will find in the master plan update, the big picture. The vision, values, principles, and goals that underline, underlie Arlington's approach to public art. The context, what is happening in the county, what is happening in the field of public art that informs our program's approach. Program areas, what are the types of work that the program does? Priorities, where does the program focus its efforts? Over the next few minutes, I will go over each of these areas briefly. Regarding our vision, Arlington's Public Art Program is noteworthy among programs in the field because of our early and unwavering commitment to this chief idea. The program brings curatorial thinking to how public spaces and public facilities are designed and activated. It's a big idea that places the program squarely within the fundamental conversations supporting the development of Arlington's public realm and puts us in constant dialogue with other county departments, private developers, and partnership organizations. These values focus on the practice of public art. They are all different ways of saying, whatever the priorities of the program, whatever issues and opportunities we are focusing on, artistic vision and integrity are paramount, and collaboration and engagement are critical to the integrity of public art projects. In this master plan update, we have added a new value relating to equity because of the central importance of that topic today. Here, we seek to recognize the importance of everyone's creative and civic voice and the importance of all residents to be able to benefit from the community's resources. These principles are something of a checklist for how the program develops projects and interacts with other county agencies, as well as with developers. They emphasize collaboration and integration with county planning and development processes. They also stress that outcomes should not only be aesthetic, they should make a meaningful difference in how people experience and relate to public spaces. One of these is the program's ability to encourage developers to contribute to pooled funds. These support Arlington, these support county-initiated public art projects by assembling public and private resources to fund planned, curated, and impactful experiences. This is highly ambitious and challenging, but it is what distinguishes our work. This last principle, make public art accessible, engaging, and enriching, is new and represents one of the ways the plan reflects our value of equity, by stressing the importance of public art as a tool for people in accessing the broader cultural and economic benefits of the community. Of these goals, the first two are traditional foundations of the program. The last two reflect changes in the field, particularly in regard to drawing on innovative ways that civically and socially engaged public art is being practiced. This includes new models of power sharing in public art practice, focusing on how the program continually reaches out to community members to engage them with public art resources. As I noted, a lot has changed in the past 17 years. In Arlington, there has been an expansion of interest in public art, which brings new opportunities for partnerships. At the same time, county priorities have evolved to include issues like sustainability, affordable housing, and equity, creating new demands for county resources, but also offering new opportunities for the program to connect to what the community cares most about. I will explore a few of these areas in greater detail over the next few slides. New directions in public art are influenced by changing priorities nationally, regionally, and in the field of public art itself. Over the past decade, there has been a vigorous expansion of interest in the field of public art, which has in turn inspired an evolution in the practice of public art. This expanded role for public art serves as an inspiration for Arlington's Public Art Program. Through our collaborations with county agencies and community members, the program is playing a fresh and dynamic role in shaping the diverse and lively urbanism that is part of Arlington's vision for its future, while building on the record of accomplishments that makes the county a model for others throughout the region and the country. We want to highlight a few of these key priorities and directions for you. Equity appears as a strong thread throughout the plan as we seek an increase of diversity, access, and inclusion, focusing on how public art can be distributed more widely in Arlington, diversifying the range of artists who are involved in projects, and expanding community participation to new audiences. Biophilia. In 2020, the county was accepted into the International Biophilic Cities Network, which is dedicated to improving the connection between residents and urban nature. The plan emphasizes encouraging artists to engage with biophilic principles and explore the use of sustainable materials in their work. In particular, the Public Art Program is embracing two new practices, creative placemaking and social practice. These approaches involve place-based community engagement and focus particularly on how artists can help bring increased awareness to issues and opportunities. We define creative placemaking as an emerging practice that promotes grassroots creative action to catalyze community and economic development, and often includes artists. In Arlington, creative placemaking has been embraced by a variety of entities as a tool for engaging artists to advance the goal of enriching the public realm. One of these efforts has focused around Courthouse, where the program collaborated with planners on temporary projects with the goal of helping people imagine the future Courthouse Square. In social practice projects, community-based processes are the core of the artistic approach. Recently, the program has worked on collaborative projects that explore the history of race and immigration in the county. For the past two years, printer Amos Kennedy, as Artist in Residence, has created free prints that explore the unique history of desegregation in Arlington. For this project, we collaborated with the county's Historic Preservation Team and the Center for Local History. I will now turn it over to Elizabeth, who will take us through the second part of the PAMP update.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Arlington's Public Art Program has thrived because it has had a clear vision and the ability to work flexibly with many partners within county government and the broader community. Looking forward, the program will continue with its vision and maintain its entrepreneurial approach while prioritizing the final, the following types of work. Two of these, public art and civic design and developer projects, have been the traditional backbone of Arlington's Public Art Program. Newer directions include special projects, which means creative collaborations, such as artist-in-residencies with other county agencies or community partners. Community-initiated projects, whether stemming from individual artists or community groups, are another category we seek to encourage going forward. The update also calls out audience engagement as a separate category because it helps to think of it of this way. One of the things our research showed is that Arlington community isn't really aware of the breadth of the county's public art resources. It's important not only to commission new work, but also find ways to keep existing artworks fresh in people's minds. A good example of this is when the Roslyn Bid commissioned artist J.J. McCracken for a performance piece that paid homage to Dark Star Park. The county has emphasized the integration of public art into buildings, infrastructure, streetscapes, and other public spaces and capital projects that it builds with a vision of transforming the design of Arlington's public realm. Following this vision, the program has been able to propose visionary, large-scale projects that involve artists in the conceptualization of infrastructure at the urban design scale, an ambition that has been accomplished by very few public art programs. An example of this is seen here with Connections by artist Barbara Bernstein. The program was able to incorporate artwork into the glass panels of the Seven Potomac Yard Crystal City Transitway stations, working in collaboration with the county's DES Transportation Department. To continue to build on the county's success in this area, the plan recommends monitoring future county planning efforts, such as comprehensive plan elements, general land use plan studies, and sector and area plans, to identify potential opportunities for public art as early as possible, familiarize lead planners with the approach of the program, and identify how the recommendations and priorities of the PAMP can be carried through in county plans, and introduce citizens involved in these planning efforts to the role that public art can play in helping to achieve the county's planning visions. The 2004 PAMP established the potential for the Public Art Program to reserve time and financial resources for special projects that are not directly related to county capital projects or private development. This master plan update offers a focused vision for special projects with an emphasis on civic initiatives that can stir people's civic imagination, as well as engage more county residents in civic dialogue. The plan offers some unique recommendations in this area, including artist-in-residencies. The program will seek opportunities to embed artists in county agencies, partnering organizations, or other entities that offer a productive environment for artists to research and develop projects that foster civic visioning. Artist engagement and planning processes. Artist-led projects can stir public interest and engagement in planning processes in ways that standard approaches do not and can prompt conversations that might not occur in typical public meetings. The program has already done this over the years with envisioning the future of Courthouse Square with a series of projects called Courthouse 2.0: Reimagining the Civic. An example of a project that was part of this series can be seen here, the Meeting Bowls by Spanish Collaborative installed temporarily at Verizon Plaza in Courthouse. As already mentioned, developer projects are a programmatic priority for public art in Arlington and enable artists to shape public aspects of private development projects. Our work with developers is featured throughout the master plan, and the plan outlines a number of goals for developer projects. Confirm that the primary purpose of public art negotiated through the site plan process is to provide long-term, integrated enhancements to Arlington's pedestrian public realm. The image here of Rising Star by artist Joe O'Clonel is a prime example of this. Commissioned by Gables Residential for Gables Point 14, the sculpture engages passersby with its monumental form and invites them over for a closer look. Consider how temporary public art programs can achieve these aforementioned goals and update guidelines accordingly. We've had a number of conversations with developers over the past few years about the possibility of temporary public art projects for site plan projects, but it must be under the right circumstances. Involve program staff in the review of site plans to consider how public art strategies and opportunities can be consistent with the PAMP and public art opportunities identified in area or sector plans. Work with CPHD to consider flexibility in how developers can meet milestones in the standard condition language when warranted by extraordinary circumstances. This is feedback that we heard in the early research stages of the PAMP. We have the milestones in place to ensure the best results for projects, but we make every effort to remain flexible when warranted. Maintain inclusion of affordable housing developments in the public art policy, but encourage flexibility and provision of public art benefits with a focus on direct access to public art for residents. One example of this is the Affordable Housing Artist in Residency, which is being supported by a National Endowment for the Arts grant. Resident artists will be provided with studio and community space at the affordable housing site and will carry out interviews, group discussions, and participatory art-making. The artists will develop a concept for a permanent public artwork that would be installed at the site. And finally, strengthen policy regarding inclusion of developers and their artworks in the program's audience development effort. As mentioned, public art cannot be regarded as a static resource, and the program must work on an ongoing basis to activate the collection. The PAMP includes two main recommended changes to public art in the site plan process that we want to point out. Public Art Fund contributions that come from affordable housing developments will be earmarked for future projects in affordable housing communities, such as the previously mentioned Affordable Housing Artist in Residency Program. For equity purposes, up to 10% of non-affordable housing contributions earmarked for use in specific areas can be redirected for use in underserved areas, such as Columbia Pike, where site plan projects are not typically negotiated. One specific project on Columbia Pike that we are supporting with Public Art Fund contributions is artwork for the canopies of 23 Columbia Pike Transit Stations. Artist Spencer Finch will be using color memories gathered from the community to inspire designs for the station. Corridors have always been a focus for public art in Arlington. For the past 17 years, the primary focus has been on the Roslyn-Balston Richmond Highway and Columbia Pike corridors, where development and infrastructure investment have been focused, as well as Four Mile Run, Arlington's major reparian and recreational corridor. In that way, the plan was building on the county's land use planning and capital investment priorities. This update adds two new corridors that are emerging, that are an emerging focus for planning, private investment in public amenities, Langston Boulevard and the Potomac River. The goals for public art in corridors are to integrate with broader planning and public realm efforts, to highlight urban and environmental systems, and to activate and interpret artworks that already exist. One important goal to point out is assemble public and private resources into planned, curated, and impactful experiences. This is highly ambitious and highly challenging, but it's what distinguishes Arlington's work. Much of Arlington's public art can be found in the Roslyn-Balston corridor largely through developer requirements. Recent planning initiatives and new development presents many opportunities for additional public art that is closely integrated with the county's emphasis on providing a stronger pedestrian realm and better public amenities. The Public Art Program has been active in the Four Mile Run area with a number of projects completed or underway. Public art goals in the plan are focused on supporting county goals for the area and enhance design and public understanding of infrastructure and natural systems. The program has two large public art projects for Columbia Pike underway that are part of infrastructure improvements. The previously mentioned Columbia Pike Transit Stations and the Pike by artist Donna Lipsky, which is being developed for Arlington's Western Gateway in conjunction with the county's multimodal street improvement project. Public art goals for the corridor are focused on supporting the vision for a walkable, transit-oriented, mixed-use, ethnically diverse, and culturally rich corridor. The Richmond Highway corridor will be a big focus for public art activity over the next several years, with the corridor being the site of some of the county's largest economic development initiatives. Over the past year, we've already been working with Amazon and JBG Smith to plan for art incorporated into open spaces for Met Park and Penn Place. And we've supported JBG's desire to develop an overall public art plan for their Crystal City properties. Goals for the corridor support strategies for integrating public art into county transportation improvements and public spaces and support public art planning at a granular level for Crystal City, Pentagon City, and Potomac Guard, with a focus on creating a cohesive, planned, and impactful program of public art for these areas. Goals for new priority area Langston Boulevard are focused around planned Langston Boulevard efforts and the East Falls Church area plan, and include supporting Langston Boulevard planning processes through artist-led community engagement activities in partnership with the Langston Boulevard Alliance. We've actually already been doing this in partnership with CPHD by working with an artist to illustrate the history, stories, and character of the corridor identified through the planning process. Support public art, temporary and permanent, in opportunity areas recommended through the Langston Boulevard planning process. And consider locating public art in key community... And consider locating public art in key community and civic locations recommended in the East Falls Church area plan, such as the west entrance to the East Falls Church Metro Rail Station. The plan includes two goals for public art as it relates to the Potomac River: support county efforts to create better connections to riverfront facilities and trails, and raise public awareness about the riverfront, the characteristics of the shoreline ecotone, and the functioning of the watershed. Arlington does not require public art commissions to adhere to specific themes, but the plan does identify five themes that are reflective of Arlington's character and could set the stage for partnerships and for artist exploration. The 2004 plan identified themes related to the county's history, its unique connection with the federal government, and its international connections. This plan adds two more themes: sustainability and innovation, drawn from the county's focus on these environmental and economic development priorities. Sustainability is an increasingly important focus for the county, especially since it was accepted into the International Biophilic Cities Network. The plan recommends encouraging artists to apply biophilic principles and use sustainable materials in their work. For innovation, the plan recommends linking the theme to the idea of commissioning a major artwork. Artists who work in media such as data mining, locative technology, robotics, and information systems could be recruited to propose demonstration projects. In this way, the program can lead the conversation about public art and innovation by example. After the master plan is adopted, the program will begin work on two other documents that are important for managing the program. It will update the county's public art policy, which was originally adopted 21 years ago. It will also be in work on an implementation guide, which is intended to be a companion piece to the public art master plan, and will include three main sections: a description of the program and its basic processes, an inventory of the collaborative efforts between the program, other county agencies and entities, and an inventory of project and program opportunities. The implementation guide was separated out from the master plan to allow for more frequent updates. The Arts Commission's Public Art Committee will review and recommend the implementation guide and any subsequent revisions to the county manager, as they currently do for the program's annual projects plan. A draft of the plan was made public on April 1st along with two video presentations and a questionnaire to aid in gathering feedback. Briefings and presentations were held with CIDFED, NAOP, Beds and Partnerships, the Parks and Rec Commission, the Urban Forestry and Natural Resources Commission, the HALRB, the Transportation Committee, the Arts Commission, and the LRPC. Overall positive feedback was received on the plan. The plan received praise for speaking to county priorities such as affordable housing, equity, and biophilia. New themes of sustainable Arlington and innovative Arlington are appreciated, as are the priority corridors, Langston Boulevard and Potomac River. Demonstrated commitment to audience development and engagement was called out as important, and several positive comments were received about the design of the plan. Actionable comments that we heard and have addressed in the latest draft include equity: a stronger commitment to equity specifically to increasing the diversity of artists and the equity of project distribution. We strengthen language in the program's work in this area and how staff plans to continue its commitment to equity and diversity, specifically around diversity in themes, artists, and locations. The public art program's commitment to the support of community-based and placemaking initiatives was strengthened. Lack of attention to evaluation was noted. A goal was added in audience development engagement on building evaluation strategies into projects that address key county goals such as equity, to better understand their impact and provide direction for future initiatives. Greater emphasis on biophilia was requested, and thus a greater emphasis was placed on encouraging artists to engage with biophilic principles and materials. The PAMP update was presented on June 29th to the LRPC. High-level discussion was centered around a few issues that we've highlighted here: affordable housing. The recommendation was made that public art staff work with planning staff to develop language for earmarking affordable housing public art fund contributions to go towards affordable housing projects, and we are certainly open to updating the standard public art site plan condition language to support this recommendation. One commission member inquired as to why the program only works with professional artists. Across the Cultural Affairs Division, we work with or support via grants a variety of artists at different levels. For public art and civic design projects, previous experience is crucial for navigating public processes, working in interdisciplinary teams, and creating art that is durable and appropriate for a long life in the public realm. Schools and students came up in this discussion as well. We don't want to preclude student art. Public art policy excludes schools, however, the program can serve as a resource to schools to identify artists for residency programs that meet APS goals, as well as enhance the design of the school itself. This is detailed further in the PAMP implementation guide that will be approved following the adoption of the plan. There was considerable discussion on how we are measuring the success of public art projects. There are methods to evaluation which, due to the wide variety of projects, cannot always be consistently used across projects. Many evaluation tools are labor-intensive and may require an enhanced budget. We will not lose sight of this and can push for more tools. From this discussion, a goal was also added under audience development and engagement: build evaluation strategies into projects that address key county goals such as equity to better understand their impact and provide direction for future initiatives. This slide provides a snapshot of the PAMP update process timeline. We're in the home stretch, and we look forward to RTA this month and adoption in November. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Adams and Ms. Kerriger. That was a very good presentation. Thank you very much. Moving on, let's see. We do not have public speakers, but do we have any other commissions that would like to comment on this beyond the letters in support that we've already received? And for the Transportation Commission, we'll note that the chair did submit a letter on behalf of Transportation Commission, which voted unanimously to support this at its last meeting. We do have an LRPC report. Commissioner Morton, are you ready to do that? Oh, and if you're not right now, please go off video if your camera's on. Okay, thank you. Hello, Commissioner Morton, it's yours now.
Thank you, Chair Lynn. Tell me, I'll be very brief because Ms. Kerriger has given a nice overview of the LRPC discussion. As she noted, we did meet on June 29th, and LRPC Chair Schroll had asked me to chair this meeting since I was familiar with PAC and the PAMP. I just want to say, in addition to what Ms. Kerriger has already shared, that I think the update and this meeting is a great opportunity to kind of demystify the public art process to us commissioners. I think you have a lot of fans, but we're not always exactly sure what happens behind the scene. And I appreciate your attempt to, as the public art field has been evolving, to also update your plan and broaden continuously the variety of ways that public art can be realized. The overarching discussion, besides what Ms. Kerriger has already talked about, is some of the ways that we can better integrate the public art into the way that the commission works with site plans, et cetera. And I'm pleased to see a lot of points in the draft plan as proposed. So my intent is to move the county manager's recommended motions, and that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. The item is now with the commission. We don't have any particular discussion agenda, so certainly if any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or questions they'd like to raise, now's the time to do it. Get your hand up if you want to talk. And while I'm waiting for that, I have a couple of items. One right here, Commissioner Hughes.
Thanks, Commissioner Lynn, tell me, sorry, everyone. So I guess, you know, I have two thoughts that I want to do, and I apologize for not making the LRPC. And so I guess my first question for staff is, I know in the past, in my time as a commissioner, I feel like we've lost opportunities for an enhanced contribution. And by that, I mean, instead of the $75,000, which we will get and be used as the commission sees fit of art, I should say, we turn down, for example, a more substantial contribution, say, three, four, or five times that value for a piece of art that the developer chooses and wishes to place outside of its building in the public realm, but doesn't have the art commission's control. And so I was wondering if staff could opine about how we have thought about that? Is it captured here? I will tell you, in the particular example I'm aware of, I will say that I think under the current equity rules, that they would have not had the same outcome, but I know we were at a different place. But my real concern is, why are we turning down a more substantial contribution? And have we done anything in our plan to explicitly tell the developer they will get no more credit than 75K, but we could consider, for example, a $250,000 sculpture placed outside on a case-by-case basis? I was hoping staff might be able to opine on that, or if that thought process came up in their deliberations over the past four years.
I guess, I thank you, Commissioner Hughes. I wanted to maybe start and turn over maybe to Matt Pfeiffer or Anthony Fusarelli for more details, but I will say, in my experience in recent site plan negotiations, the Landmark Block and the RCA project in particular, the planning staff did an excellent job of considering what real opportunities there were for public art, and were able to get enhanced contributions above the standard $75,000. So I think on a case-by-case basis, the planning staff is looking for opportunities for enhanced public art contributions. But do planning staff want to support that in any way or follow up?
Sure. Thanks, Angela. I can weigh in on this very quickly. I don't really have anything else to say beyond what you said, Angela. You know, again, there are certain opportunities that we find ourselves in. We work very closely with public art staff to identify those opportunities. And, you know, public art is a community benefit, so it always has to be weighed and balanced out with other community benefits on a case-by-case basis during site plan projects.
I guess, Mr. Pfeiffer, then, since I have you, would we gain ourselves any stronger footing in our negotiations by explicitly outlining that the contribution of 75K will be the max credit we receive in a site plan review of community benefits, but developer proposed enhanced contributions that are direct, without sort of the controls we get, we can consider on a case-by-case basis? In other words, outlining in advance, the only thing they'll ever get credit for is 75K on the balance sheet, but if they want to be more controlling of the art and deliver a substantially larger portion of it, that we would be open to such a thing? Would we gain ourselves anything by being more explicit on that?
Perhaps. I think, you know, that we have to look at it in kind of two different ways. There are instances in which, you know, we have our standard condition, which gives developers the opportunity to, you know, provide a $75,000 contribution or pursue onsite public art. And so under that current regime, you know, if the developer decides that they want to pursue onsite public art and it comes in to be a greater value than $75,000, they're not getting that. That's not eating away at the community benefits package. Now, there are other times when we might look at, you know, a site plan and we think, you know, a larger cash contribution is really what we want in this area, you know, for various different reasons. So it's kind of, you know, it's a little bit more complicated than just straightforward.
All right. Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Angela, I guess. Commissioner Lynn, I do have one more follow-up for the art commissioners, if you don't mind. All right, it looks like Commissioner Lynn.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
So, for the art staff, I will tell you, I think what there's a term, justice delayed is justice denied once. When I was a chair of my civic association, which was before my daughter was born, and she's in first grade now, so that means you can do the math, I remember explicitly having conversations with our CPRO director, Takkis, at the time, about the art projects you mentioned on the Pike. And we are now six to seven years past that time, and there's no art there. So with the confines of the equity inclusion language, I probably, not tonight, but by the time we get there, may propose some language that more targets it and more puts teeth in it. I'm afraid very sincerely that this contribution, as you've outlined, will be used more for the good projects of temporary art, but not for the awe-inspiring permanent art. That, I'll be frank with everyone, when I joined the commission, I had no idea the value in public art, because I can't see art. I'm not good at it. Some people are. But I did come to love it and appreciate it, especially with my daughter, on walks, and finding out that kids can see art no matter what. So I hope staff will consider how we can strengthen our language to be clear that... Was it staff's intention for, I'll rephrase this?
Commissioner Hughes, you've gone on mute, and I'll give you. Can you hear me, Commissioner Hughes?
I apologize, Commissioner Lynn, tell me, this is what happens when you get spammed and you push the wrong button or try to decline it. I'll phrase my question as a question to the staffers that they can hopefully answer. Was staff's intention that the 10% set aside to have the flexibility in it to be non-permanent art? In other words, the supporting of art grants, the supporting of artists and residents, the supporting of temporary art exhibits? I mean, my daughter loves the print you guys make. She loves watching that little artist make them. But that being said, I know the value of the permanent art. You know, Dark Star Park is a great example, but there's millions of them across the county. So was that staff's intention, or was the intention of staff to make that targeted acquisition to be about permanent art in areas that are underserved?
Excellent question. Once again, Commissioner Hughes, thank you for it. And I'll just say, I'm grinning because for as long as you have me leading the program for Arlington County, you're going to have somebody fighting for the very difficult work of integrating public art into larger county capital projects. It's not the easy thing to do. Temporary public art is the easy thing to do. Murals are the easy thing to do. We don't do murals. We assist community to do their own murals. We are constantly fighting, day in, day out, to use the funding that we have to combine with the budgets of larger county capital projects. And the complexity of this, I can't even begin to tell you. I have a very small, but mighty and dedicated staff who never give up this fight, and it is very unusual now to see public art programs who will do this. So I am very committed to this work. And I will say that the money, the set-aside money that we are using now is to enhance the 33 bus shelters that are going to be... Sorry, is it that many? Now I'm blocking on the number of bus shelters, but I think roughly... Thank you. Along Columbia Pike, which was a hard-won battle internally to make sure that we had the opportunity to apply public art by a world-class artist on the Pike for all of these shelters. So we are continuing to make this investment and fight the good fight to give public art, permanent public art, to Columbia Pike, as well as all the other corridors.
Ms. Zitzfeldstark, are you looking to answer Commissioner Hughes's question?
Yes, I just wanted to back. So I'm the Director of Cultural Affairs, and public art is one of the units within our division in economic development. I want to reiterate what Angela Adams just said, that we look at permanent public art that is integrated into the built environment, to the public realm, as a major asset and a differentiator for Arlington.
So would there be any opposition from staff if later there was a motion? I don't plan to do it at the RTA, because I don't think it would make it... It's not a zoning, so there's no restriction issues. The question I'd have for staff then is, would there be opposition from staff? Would staff be supportive of stronger teeth within the language of the plan to note that the set-aside for underserved areas will go to permanent art?
So I could work with you and whomever on the language. One of the things that I think has been the secret to our success is flexibility, and I would hate to come up with anything that was going to constrain us in ways that we can anticipate now, that we... going to constrain us in ways that we can anticipate now that we might wish we hadn't later. But I'm happy to work with you to talk about a way to emphasize supporting permanent public art.
So just, Angela, I'm the blunt commissioner. So I've heard that you're 99% there, but that 0.1% means that you're not going to support it.
No.
I do want to be clear, like, I do want teeth in it. Because as I said, I'm sitting in here six years later with a daughter, with a county board member who, you know, when he was a civic activist, promised me there was going to be art on the Pike that was permanent. And I can take my bike ride down there now and promise you, I don't see it. And having been a commissioner now for six years, I know the buildings I've built. I know the JBGs. I know the big-pocketed bids. And I've seen that art that gets built. And so I have to be honest with you. It hurts to say the truth sometimes, but unless there's teeth, it doesn't matter.
Can I throw one more thing out, and maybe with the help of Anthony or Matt? The Form-Based Code is maybe the issue here, because public art is directed through the Form-Based Code to focus on these gathering nodes, two of which we have done, Penrose Square and Centro. Arlington Mill was a missed opportunity. And so there is, I think, another two or three more potential. So, you know, perhaps something in the code could allow us greater opportunity, but we are working within the construct of that in terms of how we integrate public art.
And Angela, I will be honest with you. This is why, one of the reasons to my fellow commissioners, I might very well put more teeth on the language. Make no mistake about it. The pocket, which is always the question at the bottom, what is in that back pocket? What's in that right back pocket? How much money is there? It's just not there on their balance sheets. They don't have the balance sheets of a Roslyn Development, a JBG Development. The numbers don't pan out. And so that is the problem. When you want to push to get art in underserved communities that don't have the resources, you actually have to redirect resources from one section of the community to another with conscious thought. And that requires teeth in the language. Otherwise, our good friends with JBG, our good friends with all of our developers have really well-paid lawyers and a great team of advocates. And they will ensure that the art nearby is gorgeous. It is. I love it. I just want to see some more gorgeous art in harder-reach places. So I thank you guys for all you do, and for my fellow commissioners. Think about it over the next month. This is not zoning. We don't need to make amendments tonight. But I do think we need teeth on language. If we want to be honest about equity and inclusion and doing things in harder-to-reach communities, we have to be active in actually saying that we will take 10% of your money, 7,500 bucks, and redirect it to an area that doesn't have permanent art locations. So staff, be thinking about whether Virginia law allows us to do that and hopefully be able to answer that question next month. I'll try to talk with Angela and others to try to get language. But Angela, I will be honest, I want teeth on the language. I love flexibility, but we live in the world of trust but verify. And so we actually have to be honest and say, we want permanent art and we want that distribution to go there. So I appreciate your time and listening this evening. And I apologize about not making their LRPC meeting. I'm glad to hear it, but I just have to be clear. If we want art in hard-to-reach places, we have to be direct and not give ourselves flexibility. Because if we give ourselves flexibility, the high-priced lawyers will ensure it does not happen. That's just a fact. Thank you, Commissioner Lintomi.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Peterson, you're next.
Thank you so much for the presentation tonight. I appreciate Commissioner Hughes's bringing attention to making sure that there's equity in the citizens and what they get to view as public art. I'm also interested in if you have any approaches to equity related to the artists that you're choosing to do the public art. You mentioned having performance measures and evaluation tools, looking at each project, and it would be hard, you know, it's hard to kind of do across the board for every project. But I think something you could do is look at the, you know, the big eight social identifiers of each artist, you know? What is their gender? What is their race? What is their socioeconomic status? What is their religion? And kind of see like, okay, well, do we have mostly male artists? Which usually are the ones that tend to get a lot of the big projects and the money versus do we get more women? Do we get people of color? And so is that a way you're looking at very intentionally, you know, doling out the project funding that we have available? Thanks.
I'm smiling because we met with the county attorney today and purchasing to figure out ways to beef up this language. And we were going to try something fairly radical, which we were told we couldn't do. But we are going to beef up the criteria in future call for entries, including one we're working on for Bosman now, to encourage greater diversity in the applicant pool. We cannot target specific artists. But we will do all that we can to encourage greater diversity going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Weir.
Thank you for the presentation. Really excited. I want to piggyback on Commissioner Peterson's excellent question and suggestion. I think that you're probably going to tell me that this is the plan. At least, I hope so. But please don't shy away from keeping data on the outcomes, keeping along those eight demographic aspects and others on outcomes over the years. There is, you know, in my primary field of criminal justice reform, you know, there's always a, there's always an instinctual reluctance to encouraging data to be kept, for instance, on any sort of reform activity, for instance, on pre-trial justice reform, for example. And one thing that advocates very early on realized is, well, actually, if we're ever going to try to make the case that we're not hitting the metrics that we, the equity metrics that we want to be hitting, we have to have the data to show that. So even if Virginia Code doesn't allow us to target artists, you know, I do hope that you'll be keeping data over time on who applied, who got the awards. Is it proportional to whatever the relevant population is, things like that? Because without that, we're not going to be able to make the case that we need to change anything. Thanks.
Yep, that that gets measured, gets done. Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Patel. So I think Commissioner Morton. Thank you, Commissioner Patel. I'm sorry, Commissioner Morton was up. Then Commissioner Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to associate myself with Commissioner Hughes's very strong call for equity. I, early on, said, why only 10%? You know, so I'm really in favor of that. I appreciate the sentiment. I want to give a plug, however. And in a way, this is achieving some of the goals that were just talked about for temporary projects. I'm just this month starting to work on a big grant we got from a national foundation to diversify monuments on the Mall in our Commemorative Core in Washington, DC. And one of the purposes of making these temporary is to do exactly what you're saying, to diversify the artists, diversify the themes, you know, the art that has to stay there forever. You know, it's expensive. It needs to conform to codes. You need to understand the process. This was addressed by staff when they were answering the question about why only professional artists? So it's a little bit tricky. I definitely would like to see permanent art in underserved areas. I think that's super important. But I don't think we can just discount the value of temporary public art, especially it's often used as an incubator to teach young artists, you know, how to work at a large scale on an expensive project. So I don't think it has to be an either-or, but I don't want to lose sight of the sort of topicality, the eddiness, the quickness, and the diversity that temporary public art can achieve. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. And I'd like to chime in on that too, because an example, a good example we have on Langston Boulevard corridor is the Halls Hill area, where we have the park right there, which is clearly, you know, a permanent art installation. But we also have a couple of murals. We have just the just-dedicated John Langston mural on the Sports Fair Building right there. So they do complement each other quite well. They do create a sense of place. They are both art, though the mural is technically temporary. And then, of course, across the street, we have the fire station, which will be built, which has as part of, an integral part of it is the art commemorating the history of that fire station for that community. And that was a very, very big part of the design of that building. So we can have both very successfully. They shouldn't be seen as antagonistic toward each other. So, and the community, you know, the community wants these things. So that's part of listening to the community too. So I think that the distinction between permanent and temporary, we have to be really careful that one isn't seen as being inferior to the other, especially it's something that the neighborhood wants and is, and it enhances the overall feel for there. Anyway, Commissioner Steinberger, no, Commissioner Patel, I promised you were next. You have to wait, Commissioner Hughes. I'll get to you after the others, and you can give your rebuttal. Commissioner Patel, you're up.
Thank you. I'm actually glad that I came after Commissioner Morton. And I was going to say some of what Chair Lintomi has already said. I do agree with all the points that Commissioner Morton made about temporary art and the value that it can bring to many different neighborhoods, not just the underserved ones. But going back to Commissioner Weir's comments about data, I also want to make sure we're thinking about intersectionality. And when we are looking at who is given the opportunity to, you know, which artists are being used, I want to make sure that we're also collecting data on who, on the, you know, who didn't apply and why not? So where, you know, how are we selecting people? Where are the advertisements going out to? You know, where are the proposals going to? And why did we miss the mark and not get, you know, a more diverse group of applicants if that happens to be the case? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. Commissioner Steinberger, and then Commissioner Hughes, if you're still up.
Hi, thank you. So some of what I wanted to highlight on has been touched on, but I did want to further reiterate some points and then I think hit maybe a couple new ones. I do appreciate that there's a balancing act between the kind of permanency and, you know, what Commissioner Morton, I think, very eloquently identified in terms of the factors you need to consider when you're talking about a large-scale, expensive, permanent art installation. But I think that there really is something to be embraced in having temporary art installations, both in highlighting additional voices and getting art into places where it, you know, may not be as easy to get art in some cases in terms of art that maybe isn't designed to be something that is permanent and, for lack of a more eloquent term, heavy and determinative in scope. I think that's something that we should look at as both a way to highlight, look at further, but as both a way to highlight additional voices to, and really from a creativity perspective. I think that there's interesting opportunities for what we can do and how we can, you know, further community investment involvement in Arlington by looking at some of those opportunities for something that's, you know, not, you know, not designed to be there forever and intentionally so not designed to be, you know, in any place forever. I would also think that there's an opportunity to look at, you know, art that's movable in terms of if you have an installation in one place, well, could we move it elsewhere? Maybe that's another way to kind of maximize, you know, there's going to be expense associated with that in some ways. But I think there's opportunities to also say, you know, are there cost savings there? To have art in one location and then maybe as something develops, maybe it makes sense to move art somewhere else, to highlight a different development to, you know, or just to bring it to another part of the county. So that's something that I would actually like to, I'll go through all my questions and maybe I do think I want kind of feedback on some of these points from staff. You know, another thing that we talked about, you know, equitability, and I'm thrilled to, you know, that that is coming to be an emphasis, you know, in these changes to the public arts update. I was interested in if we look to kind of, for all sort of an equity standpoint in terms of accessibility and what it looks to have, like to have art that is, you know, ADA compliant, ADA accessible, and what that might look like and how the county might have kind of interplayed with that as an element as well, as, you know, just another element of equity in our, in the art that we are putting in the county and what we're emphasizing here. But I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing in terms of the approach that the county is taking to the revisions to the Public Arts Master Plan and what themes I'm seeing being emphasized here. And I was very excited to read this report and I think a lot of, a lot of important progress is being made, and I'm excited about that. So, thank you. And I guess if someone could respond to those couple of comments, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner S. I'm sorry, Sarah, I don't know your last name.
Steinberger, no worries.
Steinberger, thank you. Commissioner Steinberger, thank you. So quickly, and also to sort of capture or revisit what Commissioner Patel and Commissioner Morton also brought up, and to answer a question about this balancing act, or maybe to provide an example, and maybe this is helpful for Commissioner Hughes as well. So Amos Kennedy Jr. is a printer who we enlisted as the artist in residence to help us commemorate both the 60th anniversary of the segregation of Hoffman-Boston and then also to do a sit-ins commemoration. And it came about in an interesting way, because we sort of reverse-engineered it. We had gotten a call from our historic preservation colleagues who wanted our support in putting a, and some of you may like this, and forgive me that I, we deflected this, but a bronze stool outside of one of the locations. Not all seven locations, just one location. And we felt that we could do better. We felt that we could enlist an artist who could help us as a community, I won't say relive, but certainly to understand the importance of these events in Arlington history. And so that's why we came up with this ability for folks to interact and make pull prints. COVID shut that down, but we still figured out a way to print and distribute in the original locations, seven locations on Langston Boulevard and in Sherrlington, these prints that were made and also at Bosman. And as it turns out, we're now looking at commissioning a permanent project with this artist or using this, what we learned. So backing up what both Commissioner Morton and Commissioner Patel said about how these can be trial projects for doing permanent projects. And that's exactly what happened, is happening, I should say. We're in the process with Angus Kennedy. I also want to address, Commissioner Steinberger, your idea about movable art and give you an example of something we did do, which has been successful. So successful, we actually purchased the piece and we have it available in the future. But we created the project, The Eye in Civic, which was this opportunity for folks to be the stand-in for the letter "I" in the word civic, the first "I" in civic, and to have their photo taken and to talk about what Arlington means to them, what civic engagement means to them. So this was a piece that we did move around to three or four locations throughout the county several years ago. The artist was moving abroad. We hadn't purchased the artwork, but she gave us a great deal. We did. We have it in storage. So this is something we can bring out again, again, building on that really good idea you had. And we will look for more such opportunities. The other thing about ADA compliance and accessibility, you know, we have not done a temporary project that addresses this. And I will only say that, being a small staff, when we do do projects that are integrated into permanent projects, like a park or infrastructure, we gain the expertise of that larger group and all of their technical know-how to allow us to do accessible art. If we were to do one-offs on all these different topics, whether it's the sit-ins or civic engagement or accessibility, that's a lot of learning time for my staff to figure out how to do. But when we integrate in these other projects, we do address this issue of accessibility in particular. But we will look for some opportunities that are more specific. Thank you for the suggestion.
Just about, and that's wonderful. And I apologize that I did not remember the civic sculpture moving. I'm not sure when exactly that was, and perhaps I was not, you know.
Three years.
Okay, no, I probably should have known about that. Apologies. I would still like to say, I love that we have done that. I would like to see us do more of that. And I appreciate what you said about the accessibility. And I appreciate what you said about the accessibility element that I, that I raised as well. I'm not, I wasn't specifically saying we needed, you know, temporary movable art that met the accessibility piece, but just in, in general, sort of what that looks like. And, you know, I, I know that a lot of art can certainly be very accessible. I just wanted to hear how we were sort of factoring that in and considering it. But, um, yeah, I, I mean, I love the idea of, you know, and I, I think that, you know, we, we've heard some of the other commissioners talking about, you know, their families and others, you know, wanting to interact with the art and really, it can be such a wonderful, Arlington's not that big. We have a, a good amount of art that you can really kind of have that experience and be able to look for it in many, in many areas of our community. And I think that I want to be able to bring that to even more folks in the community and having these sort of temporary and immovable installations or what have you is, is a great way to, to, to further that. So I just, you know, I'm, I'm encouraged and I'm, you know, be excited to see where else we can kind of go with that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger, Commissioner Peterson, and again, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. Just okay, getting my camera on. So I appreciate your mentioning that you need flexibility with this plan. And I wanted to know how much of your plan is dependent on consistent budget funding, either the General Fund or CIP or Public Art Fund, and how easily can you achieve your planned goals in terms of our scale? It's a really good question. So we are sitting on a couple million dollars in our trust and agency, which is all allocated to, for the most part, to different areas throughout the community. Some is unrestricted, but very little, and all of it is earmarked. We, we used to appear in the CIP, I'm not sure if we still do, with, with a full list of those projects. And that is certainly our rainy day fund to keep us moving forward. The General Fund provides maybe $40,000 a year for us to use for projects and for consultants. So it sort of varies on our needs. So we had to pay for the master plan consultant help out of that amount of money. But that's also a good way to keep moving. We have not had any CIP set aside, and Michelle can maybe help me here, since some redirection of, of some CIP monies that were going to be used for another cultural asset and we used to fund maintenance that was in arrears. So, and that was maybe three or so, five or so, I've lost track, years ago. So that's not with the current manager, not a place where he's interested in, in way for funding.
We did, yes, that's true, Angela. We did cover maintenance for three years using CIP money that we were able to reallocate to that purpose. But, and now we are at the end of that fund. Angela, you're frozen.
Okay. Is that, have you finished, Commissioner Peterson?
Yes, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Hughes.
Thanks, Commissioner Lynn Tellme. So I, I do want to sort of clarify two things to make sure my fellow commissioners know. I, I love temporary art and I, I actually have the copies of the, the screen ink prints that Angela was speaking about. My daughter loved the lady making them. What my concern is, revolves around, is there's two, as staff outline, there's two areas that focus on the inclusion and equity. One is about more or less geographic distribution, to bring up a bad word from a long time ago. And the other one is about the sort of set aside, and that's what I understood from staff. And so my concern is that, as, as actually Angela just really clearly outlined, it always gets down to where the accountants bucket and restrict the money to, which comes out of the community benefits negotiated in site plan. And so what I just want to make sure of as we think about is, if we don't dedicate it to permanent art in the built environment that is there, it, it becomes, opportunities like this that would exist anyways, become available to be accounted for as contributing or taking away from that 10% set aside. And so if we don't actually say explicitly, it has to be in the built environment, permanent, we are then actually saying it can be used and substantified it in those ways. And so that's really, I want to make sure we all think about over the next month and go through it. Because if we don't dedicate it explicitly to permanent built environment art, it will, and it's okay. I love temporary art. It's great. I mean, it's fantastic. And Commissioner Steinberger on the, the movable art, I thought nothing of that little girl who was staring down the bowl for so many years, I think a year in New York, and then they moved it. I mean, there's nothing wrong with those things, but if we really want to have the built environment art get created in communities that do not have it, and as I've told you, before my daughter was born, I was told that there would be this permanent art installation on the west end of the Pike, and it is still not there today, and she is now in grade school. So if we don't actually say things and the accountants don't begin to put it in the buckets, it just becomes part of the needs of the community, and that's great. But there will always be money for the needs of the community when we need them. And so think about that over the next month, and that's what I'd say. But I do love temporary art. I love movable art. I love all those things. And I don't think that asking for the 10% contribution to be dedicated to the built environment is a detraction to those. Those things will still exist. And we will get something in the built environment, too. Thanks, Commissioner Lynn Tellme.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. I have a couple of comments. One is fairly minor, it's just a correction. On page 128, Global Arlington, you're talking, you've mentioned about for global, the national corporations headquartered in Arlington, and as an example, use the FDIC. Even though the FDIC does, of course, have a pretty good, pretty big footprint here in Arlington, it's actually a federal agency, not a corp, not a traditional corporation, and it is headquartered in downtown DC. So you, something you might want to correct there. But the other question I have really, or issue I have is the, it, I don't see in this larger document, the, on Langston Boulevard is the community center, I guess it was called the Lee Community Center, which name, of course, has got to get changed, too, which has been closed now for a few years and was really an artist's, and became an art center there. Right now it's closed, it is deteriorating because it's an old building, it's a former school, goes back decades. We don't mention that anywhere in here about those type of, of county facilities that really, that might be the only one that's actually had been essentially dedicated to art, creation of art and for artists. And it no longer really is usable. We don't talk about either restoring that or moving it somewhere else or having that type of a facility within the county, even though we did have one there for quite a long time. I don't know what the status of it is right now, other than it is closed and what the, what its future, what the intent is for the future on it. But should that be something that is in the plan here?
So I, I was, so I believe that would be outside the scope of the Public Art Master Plan. And I, right now, I believe it's with the county manager discussing what the future of that facility will be. The reason it's been closed, though, for a couple of years, was the pandemic. And of course, DPR had moved out into the new lever run community center, but the program itself, the Lee Art Center program, still exists. It just hasn't been operating because of the pandemic.
Okay, so that will be restored, it's somewhere, that program?
It's for the county manager, yes, for discussion.
Okay, so we don't know that. That's, the question is, we don't know whether it'll survive.
But I do believe it's not within the scope of the Public Art Master Plan.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other commissioners who have comments or questions? Not seeing any hands. Commissioner Morton, do you have a motion for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sure. I move the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the attached resolution to authorize advertisement for public hearings by the planning commission at its November 1st, 2021 meeting, and the Arlington County Board at its November 13th, 2021 meeting for final consideration of the Public Art Master Plan update.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Geren. Do we have any, do you need to speak to your motion, or do we have any further questions on this or comments on this? Hearing none, let's then move on to a vote. Commissioner Weir. Aye. Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Geren.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion has passed unanimously. Thank you very much to staff, Ms. Adams and Ms., get your, get your name right, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt here, Cariger. Thank you both for excellent presentation, for, also for answering the questions of the commissioners. I think you gave a very good account of, of this plan, and clearly we're very happy to move it forward to be advertised. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We will now move on to the, our reports from our subcommittees. Commissioner Morton for the SPRC, are you willing to go first? A lot's going on, is what I can see.
It's my meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just give a quick few updates about SPRC for the coming month. We just today opened the online engagement opportunity for the Marbella redevelopment that will be open until October 13th. And we are now starting to do in a couple of these projects, we're resuming walking tours. So we will be having a walking tour for this project on October 18th. I'll send you all these dates, if you like, my little chart. We're experimenting on this project and Penn Place, which I'll mention in a moment, on doing walking tours in the afternoon. And I'll be curious, you know, we're experimenting, so this one is going to be at noon. And there, the next project I'll talk about in October is the Wendy's site, that's chaired by Commissioner Sarley, co-chaired by Commissioner Bagley. The online feedback opportunity for that has closed. There'll be a virtual meeting sometime the third week of October, I think that's still being finalized. And finally, in October, somewhere at the end of October, I believe the date hasn't been fixed yet, Penn Place chaired by Commissioner Peterson, co-chaired by Commissioner Geren. The online feedback opportunity will start end of October, and they are also doing a walking tour. I believe the final date is October 28th at 4:00 PM. So once again, we're curious as to how these daytime walking tours work out, looking forward to getting feedback on that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. For the LRPC, Commissioner Schroll is out of town, but Commissioner Geren, you able to jump in on that, or do you have anything to, to add for it?
I, I don't. I don't have anything to add on that.
Okay, thank you. Zoko, Commissioner Patel or Commissioner Weir, either or both?
I, I was going to volunteer to go, having chaired the, the recent meeting. I can defer to you for upcoming. The recent, the zoning committee met last week to provide feedback before, on a, on some changes to the ground floor use, permitted ground floor uses on the Columbia Pike Form Based Codes area. This is not going to be coming to the planning commission. It's a minor, it's some, the minor changes, so it will be going to the county board. But I, I think that pretty much everyone who was there seemed to be happy with, with, with what they were seeing in terms of expanded, an expanded menu of options for people occupying retail bays along Columbia Pike. Things like, the, the, the sort of canonical examples that, that are given are things like maker spaces and breweries, but there are some more types of spaces that were historically considered light industrial and, and appear in, in the light industrial zones in Arlington. I'm not talking like a car shop or anything, but a lot of this stuff that I think people really like along the Four Mile Run area. And if you're interested in, in that, in catching up on what's been going on there, the, the, the meeting's available online for, for streaming, but it's going to be going directly to the board from, from there. So if you're very upset about it, speak quickly. I'll go to Commissioner Patel after, for, for the balance. We have got Mr. Fisarali's hand, I saw up, if, if you wanted to, Mr. Fisarali, if you wanted to correct the record on anything, I, I welcome it.
Good, good evening, commissioners. I don't know if this is so much a correction as far as just a clarification, but the request to advertise will be going to the board in October, and then if it gets advertised for the zoning ordinance amendments, it will then be coming back to the full planning commission in the November timeframe. So that may have been what you were suggesting, I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
No, I, I, I had a short circuit on that one. So I'm, I'm grateful for that clarification because I think, if for no other reason, then I'm very excited about the changes and I'm eager to have the other, the rest of the commission have a chance to get a, a further briefing on them and, and weigh in. So, thank you for that, Mr. Fisarali.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Patel, if you want to talk about what's coming up, I, I'm going to defer to you.
Okay, so very briefly, Zoko and LRPC are going to have a joint meeting on October 18th to discuss the Pentagon City Planning Study. So that will be a virtual meeting on October 18th, again, joint Zoko-LRPC meeting. Thank you.
Thank you both. And Commissioner Steinberger for the PFRC.
Hi, good evening. We did have a PFRC meeting, as indicated last month. We held that on, I believe it was September 29th, so last week. Still discussing the Art Bus Depot plan for Sherrlington. There, you know, with some robust conversation and a chance to discuss the transit report, which had come out, not in time to discuss it, our, our last PFRC meeting, we were able to discuss it on this occasion, some, you know, strong feedback from the Green Valley Civic Association. I thank Commissioner Lynn Tellme for joining us for that meeting. That will, my expectation is that was the final PFRC meeting for that particular project. That is not to say that, you know, there are no more issues to kind of review or determine. There, I believe that when this does ultimately come to the commission, we will have hopefully received a, reached a resolution on some sign lighting issues and some other things, but I don't believe another meeting will benefit that process or be necessary at this point in time. I think those matters will be determined external to a, a, a meeting process. So, that's the update.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Hughes, it's a rating from the Form Based Code Advisory Committee.
Besides the Form Based Code, zoning ordinance update that Commissioner Weir already mentioned, there is a review going on, preliminary designs for the second half of Penrose Square Development. Those are continuing to go back and forth between staff, and I don't think we'll see a use permit till at least Q1, probably more like Q2 of next year. Yeah, that's it, Commissioner Lynn Tellme.
Thank you. And I will be giving the Pentagon City PDSP report. That is moving along very quickly. This Friday, the staff is hoping to share the next draft of the PDSP plan with the public. So get ready to see that online. October 12th, there'll be a virtual open house. That'll be a two-week, two-week open house. There'll be new links for that coming up. two-week open house. There'll be new links for that coming up, probably before this weekend. As Commissioner Patel mentioned, we're going to be having that joint LRPC-Zoko meeting on the 18. That will be talking about the new draft, and also the zoning changes that will be needed to implement the updated policies. And you can see all this at the study website. The plan now is for Planning Commission to hear the update, the RTA update, at our November meeting, and the final at our December meeting, which would mean it could go to the board at its December meeting. We're coming to the end of this. Actually, it's been a pretty efficient process, that we're probably doing this in record time compared to normal sector plan updates, or grading for sector plans. If you can familiarize with the update, we'll try to give you some more information on that, sort of executive summary type stuff. The idea here really is to balance the community amenities upfront, with the balance that with certainty for the community of those type of amenities regarding public infrastructure, and, which means green ribbons, streetscapes, mode splits, building coverage, biopic designs, while still allowing flexibility for the developers to develop their sites and build their buildings. So we'll be interested to see if we, if we have created that right, struck that right balance between the flexibility and the flexibility, and the certainty. Anyway, that's where we are for that. We also have minutes from our September meeting to approve. I take it you've all read that, I've sent in, and others have sent in a couple of edits to Ms. Johnson. Do we have a motion to approve the September minutes? Anybody? If nobody's willing to jump in, I will then move that we approve the minutes of the Planning Commission's September meeting. We just had one.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Steinberger. And let's take the vote on that. Commissioner Weir?
Mr. Chair, before we take the vote, this might be a formatting question. The document, what am I looking at here? The document that that Ms. Johnson sent around with the title, PC Minutes Draft September, reads minutes of the virtual Arlington County Planning Commission Monday, October 4, 2021. And so, if I'm right, that that should read September 6, then I would seek unanimous consent to make that commendation.
Yes, thank you.
Hearing no objection. That amendment is definite.
So then you called on me for my vote, which is aye.
Okay. Commissioner Hughes?
Abstain.
Commissioner Geren?
Aye.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Great. As I mentioned, there will not be a recess meeting this month. I want to thank you, staff, the applicants, or actually, we don't have applicants tonight. It was all staff, members of the public listening in, for your consideration and patience this evening. The item heard this evening will be going to the County Board on its October 16 or 19 meeting, and Planning Commissioner Peterson is scheduled to represent us at the County Board hearing. Many staff labor to make this virtual meeting run smoothly. I thank all of you, with special thanks to our clerk, Ms. Johnson, to Joanne Harrison, and SPRC supervisor, Matt Pfeifer, and our tech guru, David Wood, and all the others who labor to make this, this work as smoothly as it does. With that, this month's meetings are adjourned. Knock, knock. See you all next month.
Thank you.